It says forty-one degrees up there.
Yeah, right.
No way.
Not a chance.
Yeah, were you worried about FIFA?
You want trade? One trade? Okay. We call this meeting of the Planning Commission, Southbury, to order at 7:02 on January 21st. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is a public hearing. I'll read the call and then the procedure is that the applicant will make his presentation, his or her presentation, and then the audience will have an opportunity to speak in favor of or opposed to after being recognized. And if you have any questions, please give the questions to the commission and then the commission will have the opportunity to ask questions or not have an opinion. Okay, so, public hearing. This for special exception application, 1450 Southford Road, Suites L1 and L2, the Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford, a change of use to the church and administrative offices. The applicant?
Thank you, board. Pleasure to be here. So, my name is Rabbi Shemaiah Hecht of the Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford. We began about a year and a half ago. We moved to Oxford to open up the Chabad Jewish Center, which its goal is to enhance Jewish life in Oxford and the surrounding towns, including Southbury, and by providing a space where people of all backgrounds are interested in Judaism, can learn and understand what Judaism is all about, its traditions, meaning and purpose and philosophy which it puts forward. And we, thank God, have seen much success through our various programs that we do. Until now, we've been operating out of private homes or public spaces such as the Oxford Public Library and it has come to the time that we're looking for a permanent space. And this space came up, this location at 1450 Southford Road, and it would greatly serve our needs for what we would like to use it for. And that's why we are here today. We, is there any other specific details or?
Give us the scope of your uses.
Yes, so the scope of the use would be for office space, classes, meetings and programs of the Chabad Jewish Center. It would be, we'd have a kind of a general area which would be able to be used for any meetings or programs or classes, as well as office space, which we'll use for administrative offices for our work and some storage space. There's two bathrooms on site. There's a small kitchenette in the back which is already existing. We would not be changing any structural changes to the property. It'll remain the same. We, we want it to be able to fit into what, you know, the neighborhood feel and what, keep as much as it was, keep it as it currently is without much changes. And that is what we're going to be using it for. Yes?
Oh, not yet, not yet.
We, the, the max, our, our size of crowd is usually anywhere between five and fifteen people generally. We hope to grow, but that's, that's what we have right now, what we see for the foreseeable future. We would max it at, for what the space can hold. It's a 3,000 square foot gross space. The net assembly area, I guess we'd want to call it that way, would be about 1,000, I have it down here exactly, I think it's 1,072, 1,092 square feet would be the net assembly area. And the max occupant load which we would cap it at would be 60. That would fit with the current parking which was, is technically allotted to the previous use of the bank as a business under the Munich Code parking specifications for the, for the business. The, it would be 20 parking spots which would be allotted to the bank and therefore for the church or, you know, places of worship or assembly halls. It would be one space for each, each three seats. It would keep with the same 20 parking spots. We wouldn't be adding any more parking. And I think, is there anything else I wanted to mention? The lighting would stay the same as what's currently on, on the property. Signage, I submitted the signage plan with, with Jordan. Does everybody see that? Everyone has that? Okay. And as well, did you get this, the letter that I emailed to you? No, this is just a letter of support from the landlord explaining that this, this space has been vacant for the past couple of years and being able to fill it would be of landlord's interest and everybody's in the plaza's interest as well. And I think other than that, I think that's pretty much it.
I'll read this and correspond this into the public hearing. From BG LLC, 1450 Southford Road, Southbury, Connecticut, to whom it may concern, the space at 1450 Southford Road, Southbury, Connecticut, has been empty for a number of years. For various reasons, it has been hard finding a tenant. We would be happy to fill the empty space. We are requesting that the board approve this special exception application put forward by the Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford. Sincerely, Bob of BG LLC. Okay, finished?
Yep.
Okay. Are there, is anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application first? Come, give your name, please.
Hi, my name is Arlene McCarthy. I live on Tappy Drive. I am the Secretary of the Scotty Cook Shores Homeowners Association and a fourth-year tutor at Pompa Rock Elementary. I've been affiliated with Chabad since I was in college, which you may find hard to believe, but it was over 50 years ago. And I cannot even communicate how much it has enriched my life. The people who operate the Chabad Jewish Center are welcoming, are educational, are non-pressure, it's not evangelical in any way. They provide educational programs, including at the library, which hopefully our library will reopen soon. I know there, we have space now, right, in Heritage Village for the library, so I'm sure they'll be reaching out there. So that it's not just educational to Jews who might be interested in learning more about their religion, but it's also educational for the general community. And I feel like with the surge in this incredible amount of antisemitism in the world, that the more that we can educate people, the better. And the more we can share what Judaism is about, the better. So, I think that also, what else did I write down here? Oh, yes, there is only one synagogue in Southbury and I don't know if people know the different sections or, or the different types of Judaism that are practiced. But the synagogue here in Southbury, which is wonderful, is a reformed synagogue. And so for people who want to have a different relationship with tradition, Chabad is the way to go. It's nonjudgmental, very inclusionary. You can do as much or as little as you want. And so I think it's a real asset to the community and I really hope that we'll be able to continue a meeting here in Southbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the application? Anyone opposed to the application? Anyone with any questions? Okay, we open up to the commission? Yes, Robin?
Thank you for presenting the application. It shows that it's five, you're expecting five to 15 participants. So does that mean there's not going to be services like for High Holy Days or any of the Jewish holidays there?
Yeah, you'll come up and then answer the questions.
So, we don't expect to hold weekly services. That's not something that's on our foreseeable future currently.
Okay.
So it's not, that's not, it's not going to be a weekly service on a weekly basis for possibly high holidays, possibly such, but on a weekly basis, definitely not.
Any other questions?
Did you discuss or did you mention the hours that you would, of operation?
Thank you for bringing that up. The hours of operation would be regular business hours for the office mainly and then any other things that would happen during that time, with from time to time classes being in the evenings. But that's the general hours, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? When you said these other activities though, nine to five, it will be more hours, right?
I'm sorry?
The other activities, the assemblies, the?
So some will be during that, during those times and some will be in the evenings, in the evenings, some classes or, or?
So both.
Yeah.
Hours and days of operation, days?
From the regular business hours from Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday.
Yeah.
No weekend hours or?
It, it's, the, the hours of the office would be from Monday to Friday. There may be something happen on a weekend, but it's not a, it's not a set and scheduled.
So it could be seven days max. We have to look, we have to look at worst-case scenario.
Right.
That's our purview.
Right, I mean, that's, the hours of operation, those would be the hours of operation. So if we'd put on our, on our website, when we're open, those are the times that we're open. You know, if someone wants to come in to meet or that would be the times that we're open. If there would be a, a, an event or, you know, a class at, at a later time, that, that may be a possibility, but that's not our, so say our hours of operation. If, if that's clear.
Okay, just so we're clear.
Yeah, perhaps you might also be able to give us an idea of when you're offering classes now? Are they mostly during the day, in the evening, at the libraries, for instance?
So the, the classes aren't, weren't at the library. Classes would be, you know, private homes or, and they would be, that, those classes, there's currently a kind of a course that we're working with. That's like, it's once a week. And that, that, it's a six-week segment, segments of six weeks. We just finished one, we're going to be starting another one in February. That's for six weeks and then there's another four-week course after that. So the different topics, topics of Judaism. And that, those, those, those classes are in the evening. And they are once a week, yes. They are once a week.
And, and is the intention then to move them to this, to the office as well?
Yeah, to that area that, yeah, that would be the idea, to move them to the space that we'd be able to use it for.
I understand the office hours are nine to five. However, it could be a seven-day operation.
If we want to put it, put it with those words.
So it's in your application?
I'm sorry?
So it's in your application and it's not?
What I wrote in the application was the regular business hour. It would be regular business hours within classes being in the evening. But if we want, if we need to make an amendment or something to those, I, I thought that was, I mean, that was my understanding when I put that in. But that, if, if it would need to be changed, I guess we can, we can change it for the court.
Anything else, Jordan?
Answer the questions. You have the occupancy, so you can reference the parking. You got the hours of operation generally nailed down, but obviously, you know, holidays and classes are going to be variable. So I think most of the questions were addressed here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close this public hearing. 7:16. First, next item on our agenda is unfinished, under, yes, unfinished business is this application. And we have a draft decision. Thank you, Jordan. This is the possibility, okay? Whereas the Southbury Planning Commission on 12/10 received an application for a special exception dated received by the Land Use Department on 12/9/24. Whereas the proposed special exception would allow for the use of existing retail spaces of Unit L1 and L2 to be used by the Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford for classes, meetings, offices, events and programs. No changes to the exterior of the existing structure are proposed. Whereas the proposed use as applied as permitted as under Section A B-3 within the B1-B as a special exception. Whereas the commission has received requisite approval from the Housatonic Health District dated 1/8/2025 for the proposed use, Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford, as shown in the plan dated 1/6/2025. Whereas the commission finds the proposed use as indicated by the applicant to accommodate the Chabad Jewish Center of Oxford, expected attendance, five to 15 people, standard business hours of operation with evening classes from time to time, office spaces, meetings, classes and programs, maximum occupancy of 60 people. And this is in keeping with the pertinent regulations of the Town of Southbury Plan of Conservation and Development. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Southbury Planning Commission, the application would be approved to allow operations of the Jewish Center of Oxford at the above referenced location, subject to the following. The submission and approval of applications to the zoning and building department. And, oh, let me shade on this, signage meets the regulations. No changing, no change in the lighting. Anything else? Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve is ready.
I can direct the motion. I don't think you seated me.
She's about to say that, yeah. I think we have a formally.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, we, we didn't seat you as an alternate because we need four for a quorum. Okay, we don't need a motion for that. We'll seat you.
Who are we seating her for?
For this application.
Uh, what individual?
Alex Gittnis.
Hope Rose, yes, seating.
Robin?
Right, perfect.
Right, don't you have to choose a member?
Yep, we have to seat her in place of a regular member.
Okay, of a regular member. It doesn't have to be named. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
That was approved, but if you could get the microphones a little closer here, we can hear your wise comments on each thing. I know, period, but I still can't hear it.
My voice doesn't carry. Like that? Okay.
Yeah, so you guys are all set? Yep, yep.
Next item on our agenda is a site plan modification application for 1411 Southford Road Wheels Gas Station. Signage conversion from sitco to mobile. Do we have the specifications?
You'll have in that application a request for an extension to the next meeting. They do not have the photometric lighting data necessary for the signage that they're amending. So they're requesting that we hold this until the next meeting.
Okay, we don't need a motion. That'll be continued to the next agenda for the February, February 18th meeting. Seven o'clock, Row 205B, hopefully. New business, high plan modification, 220 Main Street South, AM Coffee and Company revised statement of use for expansion of seating area from eight to 16 seats. Did we get Health Department?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Just under the gun. You got it today. So it should be in there under new submissions. It's the bottom folder. You are?
Yes.
Fantastic.
I'm one of the owners.
Yep, so we actually have a representative for AM Coffee.
My name's Andy Jeffs, one of the current owners of AM Coffee. The company is owned by myself, my wife Megan Jeffs and our business partner Amanda Ing. And as Jordan mentioned, we're just looking to expand our seating from eight to 16.
And you look at the parking?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so standards for parking. When we are looking at restaurants, require greater of one space for every 40 square feet of patron floor area or one space for every two and a half patron seats. That effectively works out to be either six, roughly six and a half spaces or 15 parking spaces. When this specific use was approved for a special exception back in 2020, the holistic parking was looked at and addressed from the timing of the needs addressed on that site. And given that Julio's is a major parking generator but operates in the evenings, the original use was deemed to be permissible with the parking allotted. The expansion doesn't increase the parking substantially and this specific use carries the same timeline as was previously approved in the special exception. Everything aligns with what was previously approved? That's why they were granted administrative approval and now they are back in to see if we can have an, if they can have an expansion of the eight additional seats.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
Have there been any complaints about the parking or traffic in the parking lot?
Nope, none that my office has received, but?
No, I, I don't believe so. I've been there quite a bit when I'm not at my current job and I think parking is pretty sufficient. There's parking around the whole building and I haven't noticed any issues.
No changes in, no changes in lighting, signage?
Nope, nope. We met all the standards that when we officially opened with the, the proper eight-foot signage for the front of the building and we did no changes to the lighting on premise.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Do I have the resolution? Is that the same? Yes.
Perfect.
We have a resolution drafted by our staff. January 21st, 2025. Whereas Southbury Planning Commission on 1/21/25 received an application for a site plan modification dated received by the Land Use Department, 12/13/24. Whereas the proposed site plan modification would allow for the expansion of the approved seating to be 18 seats. Was it nine before? I think it was 16. 16, okay.
Correct, yeah, 16 tailored seats.
Whereas the commission has received requisite approval from the Housatonic Health District dated today for the expansion of approved seating from eight to 18. Eight to 18.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
We'll have to amend that to sixteen.
Is 16 the maximum for one bathroom?
Sixteen, I believe from the international.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, just want to make sure, okay.
Whereas the commission finds the proposed site plan modification as indicated by the applicant for the expansion of seating to adhere to the overall site plan and zoning requirements and is in keeping with the pertinent regulations of the Town of Southbury Plan of Conservation and Development. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Southbury Planning Commission, the application is approved to allow, the expansion to allow for a maximum of 16, change this, 16, subject to the following. Expansion of statement of use, seating, hours of operation or change of ownership will require submission of a statement of use to the zoning enforcement officer for review on the adherence of the proposal to the approved special exception.
Great.
You're aware of that, okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
As?
As, as ready.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, could I ask one question on that? Are we, when would we be able to start this? Is it immediate or do we have to wait for?
Soon as we sign off.
Posting goes, posting for this goes in on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, okay.
And by Wednesday, I don't mean tomorrow, unfortunately, because we have to get the posting in the newspaper. It's a 15-day appeal period following that posting.
Okay.
So effectively, it becomes compliant at that date.
At that date, 15 days from this Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay. So approximately 21 days from now, 22 days from now?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. Have a great night. Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is referrals to the zoning commission. This is not for our approval. It's either a positive or negative referral to the zoning commission. First item is PDD number eight, Southbury Green, 775 Main Street South, a text amendment for their signage. We have a, we have specifications online, did you see? Yeah. Okay. Do we have any questions? I don't think so. They didn't provide any specs yet, did they?
No, they didn't provide renderings, but you got a draft regulation drawn up. And then I provided a report describing to everyone the conditions of which this meeting schedule fell and the approval that was granted, but the referral's still in front of you. So if you guys have any questions, we're happy to, you know, I'm, I've been part of both applications, so I'm happy to address any of those. But effectively, it's, it's kind of a moot point at this junction.
What were your findings?
I think this is a, a great proposal. I think it's a reduction across the board. I think it addresses a lot of the issues. We had approximately four tenants apply for signage and many of them had to be told to increase their signage to meet the standards, which was not really the intent of the signage regulations. But when they were drafted in 2020 to create this new signage packet, for some reason, the minimum and maximum lettering height was pretty extensive, which causes a lot of unintended consequences with respect to the signs that you end up with when your lettering is so large. So I think this was across-the-board improvement and allows tenants to really cater to their specific unit as it's related to adequate signage that meets all the needs.
Which will make things easier to find and identify.
Yep. They will be smaller, but hopefully we'll have less egregious signage that doesn't really fit the parcel.
Okay, so we need a positive referral or a negative referral?
Do we even need the referrals still?
For the, based on this, no. But for the record, if you felt so inclined to give your opinion on this, the zoning commission would happily kind of hear that opinion.
On A-24, we have to give a referral?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But the timeline wasn't met with respect to this, so the zoning commission already voted on this.
Oh, because they met before we did.
Mm-hmm, because of the strange.
So it's retroactively.
So for the record, I would make a motion for a positive referral.
Thank you.
Thank you, second?
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Was that off the schedule yesterday?
No, it was not. So this, this, this referral that was just voted on was regarding 775 Main Street South. That's okay. You guys want to sit closer if you want?
We can move closer.
You can move closer if you'd like.
Can you tell your sound to me?
Okay.
When you get to thirty-three Burma Road, can you explain what it means?
Wait a second, okay.
Next.
Okay.
Please.
The next item on our agenda is also, the same procedure is followed. The Planning Commission is charged with making a referral to the zoning commission. We do not approve or disapprove, we make the referral. Okay, and we have had, thank you to staff, had a lot of research, which Jordan is going to share with us, which we shared with the commission already.
So everyone's, everyone's received the memorandum for this?
Yes.
Regarding the review. So if there's any questions, it's pretty extensive, I'm happy to address those.
Please do.
But...
Read it into the record?
I don't think reading it the entirety is necessary. It's quite long. I don't think I have the original version with your truncated...
This is, this is the original.
Correct, yeah. So are there any questions regarding this that I can help address?
Is everyone aware?
It's a zone boundary change, this is what's before this commission. You are giving your positive or negative referral based on adherence to the Plan of Conservation and Development, and any other plan that this commission may deem necessary. I've included the two thousand and six Southford Plan of Conservation and Development because I feel it's a pertinent plan to review when discussing this potential zone boundary change. So with that being said, if there's any questions, I'm happy to address those.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, no.
I guess my question, Jordan, would be, based on the plans that were submitted?
Mm-hmm.
There was various housing styles and mixed-use plans entertained. And it's my understanding that if this zone change didn't take place, this same type of housing, mixed-use housing could take place, just on a smaller scale?
With respect to the mixed use, I believe you're referring to the residential side?
Yeah.
Because across the board, it can still happen on both ends. On the residential side, depending on how many parcels could be broken out of the existing zone boundary, roughly two likely, given the wetlands and slopes, they would still be possibly able to go through the single-family ADU option that was elaborated on one of the lots. And they could also, if they were able to achieve one point seven five times the minimum lot area for the R thirty zone, could achieve the duplex-style home that they had proposed. So possibly two, maybe one, and then a single-family and an ADU, possibly one altogether on the lot. It really depends on the specific site conditions that get proposed, and how the subdivision would end up getting laid out. Thank you.
Did you read that the impact on any buffers though would be significant, which we require between residential and commercial? That's one thing. Also, the traffic report was, is that part of this? Yes.
No, you would not get a traffic report for the zone boundary change.
That would be zoning, that would be zoning, the traffic report, yeah.
That would come for the commercial application, which will, is currently being discussed as a planned development unit through the Planning Commission. So we would figure out a traffic report at that junction.
And that would be an independent paid for by the applicant, correct?
Whatever this commission deemed necessary at that time.
Yes. Okay. Questions? Comments, questions?
That is ours. That is ours. This was thirty-three Burma Road, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, that is ours.
Okay, that's all right. I thought I was hearing better than they were, but I guess not. I really would appreciate it if you'd use the pikes then. And I'm sorry to ask you to backtrack a little bit.
I know you're not the commission that makes the decision about what happens. It's going to go to zoning, and that will be a zoning meeting.
Right, but this referral, this is a, this is a referral. We, this is not a public hearing, so we can't hear from you in this venue.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, we can ask questions.
But this is, we'll tell you what the procedure is.
Yeah.
This is the Planning Commission, we make a referral to the zoning commission, positive referral or negative referral based on the findings of our staff and the opinions of this commission, based on those findings.
And in the newspaper?
No, okay.
The goal of this commission is solely to review the application before the zoning commission, which is for a zone boundary change, and to review that zone boundary change proposal and its consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Which at this juncture, I'll give my opinion, does not meet the planning, the Plan of Conservation and Development purviews, which is our guide, and is, is in stone.
I, I would just like to put on the record, though, that from an affordable housing standpoint, that while I realize the other impacts and influences from an affordable housing standpoint, I, I would certainly want to encourage looking at alternatives, which this is.
Variety of housing types.
I think that it's...
This is not affordable housing.
I, I think we're looking, we're trying to look at mixed-use and a variety of housing options.
Mm-hmm.
And that certainly was a positive in this.
And with the Affordable Housing Plan being adopted, and the Affordable Housing Subcommittee sitting as a subset of this committee, commission, it's a worthwhile discussion to opine on whether or not a particular application before this commission, or a referral before this commission, adheres to some of the needs that have been dictated in the plans here in Southbury.
And we certainly know that there's a need for a variety of housing in this town.
Yep.
Not necessarily affordable housing by statute, but all types of housing.
Organic is, yeah, great way of putting it.
It, in my opinion, it, you know, on one hand, we're encouraging various types of housing through our P O C D, and through our work as a commission with our Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And yet, on the other hand, the P O C D is trying to protect a, a feel for the town, the rural feel, trying to maintain our setbacks. And I do realize that we have a Southford plan from two thousand and six. So i- it's not that they're in contrast totally with each other, but there are, I think, sections that raise concerns that weren't addressed or probably thought of in two thousand and six, when this plan was originally thought of, so...
There are, has to be an appropriate site, however, that will not encroach upon, especially keeping with our Southford, I mean, we spent a lot of time on our Southford Village plan. So for it to be appropriate, to be buffered properly, to address all of the issues, the traffic, the especially...
Though, though I would say that plan is almost twenty years old, and that while I, I don't demean the work and the integrity of it, and that we can certainly use that, we also need to look at the needs of, how needs have changed, and how we can balance those, just...
With one or two houses on this not appropriate property, as far as I'm concerned. Yes, Robert?
No, I, I think at some point, we're going to have to make some decisions about how these coexist.
Mm-hmm.
How we maintain the character of the town, the aesthetics of the town, but still...
And the Southbury.
Right. But still provide...
And the Southford Village.
Throughout Southbury, we're going to have to come to terms with it, I think.
I agree. However, Southford Village has its study and its parameters have not changed.
Yeah.
I will say, if this commission is looking for just some updated language regarding the Southford Village District, without going into the two thousand and six P O C D, which is broken down here based on the plan that it's referencing, the two thousand and twenty-three P O C D does have a section specifically for Southford. And two very clear bullet points, and they're very short and simple, are maintain Southford as a low-intensity village, which provides convenient commercial services, and preserve natural and historic features that contribute to the rural village nature of Southford. So if the commission didn't want to go deep into the weeds with respect to a plan that's over twenty years old, referencing some of the more recent language with respect to how Southford Village is being looked at from a planning standpoint, that would be where I would guide you.
So it's two thousand and twenty-three?
Can I ask a question about what you are referencing? Have you looked at the recent police speed studies on Burma Road?
That's not our purview.
And unfortunately, we can't take public comment right now, Barb.
Yeah.
You can't what?
Take, take public comment right now.
That was a question, that was not a comment. I just asked you.
Even a question, we can't, because it's not a public hearing, unfortunately. You can do that when it comes up for a public hearing, for the, from the zoning commission. That's, that's where it's appropriate.
If you're curious about anything that's discussed here today, I'm happy to go over anything in the office and review anything, and we can also discuss the minutes of the meeting in case anything is missed by anyone in the public right now.
Can you get into the record too, and for the commission members who may not be familiar with this, and more of your findings? Because the public can hear it.
Oh, so you want me to read the report?
Or your comments, your responses, yes?
Certainly, I, I, I understand there would be a concern about speed and...
Southford Village is the concern.
Road usage.
Yeah, Southford Village. The historic.
So maybe we want to discuss some of that.
And the Historic Society participated...
Can you louder?
Historic Society participated greatly in this Southford Village plan, which this does not conform to. Yes, please.
All right. To Planning Commission, from Jordan Marsenko, Land Use Administrator, date January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, subject eight dash three A, request thirty-three Burma Road Zone Boundary Change Amendment to R thirty and B one A Boundary Location. In accordance with General Statutes eight dash three A, the Southbury Zoning Commission, at the regularly scheduled meeting on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, voted to refer the Zone Map Amendment to the Southbury Planning Commission. This amendment proposes to modify the existing zone boundary on thirty-three Burma Road, open parentheses, map block and lot fifty-four twenty-eight one, close parentheses. This boundary change proposes to extend the current R thirty zone boundary further towards Southford Road, Route sixty-seven. The boundary change would reduce the size of the commercial lot and would increase the lot area for the residential portion in order to allow the applicant to achieve a three-lot residential subdivision rather than a two-lot residential subdivision. Connecticut General Statutes eight dash three A states the Planning Commission should generate a report on the consistency of the proposed amendment with the Plan of Conservation and Development, as well as any other plan the commission may find relevant. Consistency of this proposal with the two thousand and six Plan of Conservation and Development should be considered and reported on by the Planning Commission. Two thousand and twenty-three P O C D, sections and notes. Southford, maintain Southford as a low-intensity village which provides convenient commercial services. Bullet point, preserve and the natural and historic features that contribute to the rural village nature of Southford. This proposal looks to conduct a high-density project as evidence of the boundary amendment being proposed in order to achieve an additional residential lot for development. Implementation of low-intensity convenient commercial services could be achieved while preserving the rural and historic features of this lot by maintaining the current zone boundary, therefore only allowing two-lot subdivision rather than a three. Economic development, provide for the best use of commercial and economic development sites already designated and in a manner that supports the country-town character of Southbury. Recognizes the proximity of highway systems of most locations, avoids traffic congestion, and avoids other adverse impact upon the community. Another bullet, encourage a sustained focus on projects to support new businesses. Third bullet, maintain existing commercial and industrial zone patterns. Carefully monitor, careful monitoring to any change to boundaries is essential. This section is important in that it calls out the need for new commercial and economic development sites. However, it cautions against the changing commercial boundaries without significant care in order to avoid the reduction in the rural country, character, and aesthetic of the town and of this Village District. Rural small-town feel is quoted in Southbury two thousand and twenty-three P O C D as predominantly low-density residential patterns combined with water bodies, scenic areas, farms, and open space contribute to the Southbury's rural feel. Item line, Small Town Community Setting and Aesthetic Program. Under Policies, Item L, continue to maintain appropriate buffers and transitions between land uses. Modifying the zone boundary to increase the residential portion of the property while reducing the commercial portion can have drastic impacts on buffers within the Southford Village District. Residential property owners have no requirement to maintain, preserve the vegetation and trees that naturally buffer these proposed parcels from the commercial parcel. Furthermore, reducing the commercial portion reduces the ability to implement an adequate planting plan in order to effectively and permanently buffer the residential properties on Burma Road from the proposed commercial building on Southford Road. Item, Community Structure Program. Under Programs, Steps, Item eight, forward the Route sixty-seven gateway from Oxford. Encourage the improvement of overall appearance as one enters Southbury by, bullet point, one, implementing the recommendations in the two thousand and six Plan of Conservation and Development, bullet point two, adding buffers and improving plantings. I will outline the pertinent goals included in the two thousand and six Southford Plan of Conservation and Development, but the section further elaborates on the importance of buffering in this district. The item under Southford Program. Under Policies, Item D, preserve significant historic structures such as rock walls. And Item E, require site development that is appropriate for Southford relative to subsection I, intensity of development, subsection III, proper buffer from residential locations. And Item III, adequate infrastructure. And Item IV, preservation and improvement of landscaping. And Item V, signage and illumination. Item F, maintain the residential neighborhoods in Southford and do not expand the commercial zone. The Southford Program outlines various goals to limit development and maintain a rural vision, village aesthetic. Development should be planned in a manner that limits the intensity and provides adequate buffers to residential locations. Housing and Residential Strategies Program. Under Policies, Item A, establish a pattern and density of residential development that maintains the rural and scenic quality of Southbury and clearly does not exceed the onsite carrying capacity of water and sewage disposal. Item B, continue to encourage and facilitate the provisions of apartments accessory to single-family dwellings and apartments above retail establishments when onsite water supply and sewage disposals are certified and sufficient, and appearance of a single-family premises is maintained. The Southbury P O C D outlines the need for a variety of housing types which are achieved through this proposal based on the inclusion of mixed-use commercial development and with two multifamily dwellings and a single-family home on the accessory dwelling. Although the proposal adheres to this section and provides a variety of needing housing types, the intensity of development would also need to match the Southford Village District. Circulation Program. Under Programs, Steps, Item eleven, improve road connections, especially when new residential development or subdivisions are proposed where feasible. This proposal should be looked at to potentially address concerns from residents on Burma Road, given the road is currently and improperly being utilized as a throughway by motorists traveling through Burma and south on Route one eighty-eight. Circulation improvements should be considered by redirecting the intersection of Burma Road and Southford Road on Route sixty-seven to a T junction. A more permanent, albeit challenging, improvement would be to dead-end the intersection of Burma Road and Southford Road into a cul-de-sac. This would ensure that only residential traffic operated on Burma Road and all of the motorists who would typically cut through Burma Road would be required to utilize the state roads of Route sixty-seven and Route one eighty-eight for travel. Into the two thousand and six Plan of Conservation and Development, Sections and Notes. Under Streams and Wetlands, sensitive environments, areas such as streams and wetlands are also located in this area. It is important that these features be clearly identified and protected from adverse impacts due to proposed development of any sort in this area. The preservation of these natural resources are important to the preservation and functioning of a natural drainage system in the area. It will be the responsibility in the Wetlands and Water Course Agency to review this application for compliance with the wetlands regulations. However, it should be noted that without an amendment to the zone boundary, there would likely be only two residential lots capable of being developed in the R thirty area currently provided. This would result in a reduction in the resident... This would result in a reduction in the residential development and further reduction in the impact to natural resources. Under Highways, quote, significant effort should continue to be put into minimizing the number of new curb cuts and combining existing access points wherever possible. Reducing curb cuts wherever possible should remain a goal when considering this proposal for the zone boundary change. With the boundary change, an additional residential lot will be created and therefore an additional curb cover will be created. Recommendations for the future. Bullet point one, site development guidelines, which are appropriate to the village center setting that is accessible by pedestrian as well as vehicular traffic. These guidelines need to provide year-round screening and protection from commercial lighting, glare, noise, and traffic for residential areas, which above commercial uses this section elaborates. On pedestrian accessibility, the importance of year-round buffers from the commercial area to residential districts. This can be achieved through a commercial planting plan that would be enforced through the town regulations. Site development, under item C, proper transition from commercial to residential uses. These uses are to be separated by retention of sufficient year-round screening or installing of plantings so as to create year-round appropriate buffer screening and landscaping. As stated above, this section further elaborates on the need for buffers and the need for adequate land to implement a commercial buffer that meets the intent of this plan. Landscape features or elements. The following features or elements are recommended for consideration and implementation whenever possible. Preservation or conservation of the triangular wood-shaped area between Burma Road and Route sixty-seven will help provide a natural transition to the more developed village area of Southford. These woods provide a natural softening in the area and help separate the residences on Burma Road, form a higher volume of traffic on Route sixty-seven. This area could possibly serve as one segment of a possible pedestrian link from the Bridle Trail to Southford Falls in the future. Although this commission has no ability to deem this lot undevelopable, this section helps to elaborate on the limited development touch that is intended for that parcel when formulating this plan. Although development is all but guaranteed someday, the commission should continue to recommend a light-touch development as was originally intended when the two thousand and six Southford P O C D was created. Comments, concerns? The Planning Commission is only reporting to the zoning commission on the consistency of the proposed zone boundary change to the two thousand and twenty-three Plan of Conservation and Development, as well as the two thousand and six Southford Plan of Conservation and Development. Based on these plans, the main goal that the P O C D outlines, which is achieved through this proposal, would be to increase the housing variety and affordability. This is accomplished through the proposal of multifamily homes, accessory dwelling units, and a mixed-use development. Although this proposal adheres to this goal, it does not adhere to the goal of maintaining a country feel and rural character and aesthetic. This is evidenced by the zone boundary change being proposed to achieve a maximum development possible on this parcel. Although one goal can be achieved, it should not be considered in spite of many of the other goals outlined in the two thousand and twenty-three P O C D and the two thousand and six Southford P O C D. If the zone boundary change was not approved, the applicant could still achieve multiple residential lots with the commercial mixed-use development. This would achieve the goals outlined in the twenty-three, twenty-three P O C D by increasing the housing variety and stock while also working with the applicant to maintain a rural country, character, and aesthetic, as well as the village character. Buffers and aesthetic outlined in the two thousand and six Southford P O C D.
Thank you, Jordan. And so we have some points to discuss. Affordable housing, my opinion, isn't anywhere. It's where it's appropriate. It's, so there's the rural character to consider. There's to the buffers impact to consider. There's the increase in density to consider for this particular location. There's the research and planning that went into our plan for Southford Village with the Historic Society and input from other commissions. The O C D, no commercial expansion here. The natural resources effect, the curb cuts, the safety, the lighting and commercial into residential. The impact on the natural resources there. I hope that commission members have looked at this property, driven it, and understand all of the points that our staff just illustrated. It's my opinion that it's not appropriate here, that three lots would increase the density, would affect the natural resources, would diminish the rural character that was worked on to preserve for this, for Southford Village. I would, I would suggest a negative referral with the attachment of the research from our staff on these twelve points total. And then it's up to the zoning commission. And it's never saying that we are not for affordable housing, we are, but it's where it's appropriate.
I, I think the trouble, just for sake of argument, the, the trouble with that is there's always an excuse to not have affordable housing and, and it, it just keeps coming up. We can always find barriers to it. I certainly agree that this, you know, if you're asking, is it consistent with the Plan of Conservation and the, the, the Southford Plan of Conservation and Development and our P O C D for the town? No, it is not consistent.
Yeah, and so we, we are, have a responsibility here.
I will say that no affordable housing is being proposed for this development. Currently before you is a lot line boundary change. The idea that affordable housing is being discussed is just through the idea that this provides a mixed variety of housing type, and that is a goal of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee.
Yeah, it's two or three lots. They propose a three, which is, increases the density significantly. We have a, we have a report coming up on our agenda from the Affordable Housing Committee. But to look at this particular location, I don't think has been considered by the Affordable Housing Committee because there's certainly great sites in this town for diversity, diverse housing and affordable housing. Just not here for me.
Oh, and, and in my mind, just to clarify, like Jordan said, we keep referencing affordable housing, and this is not an affordable housing.
My follow-up is again.
Yeah, application or anything, but I, I think as a whole, we have to look at housing in a different light. All types of housing. Because this has been the issue, this is why our Subcommittee was formed, is that there's been a lack of stock of all types of housing. And this potentially adds, you know, one more house.
No, they're, they're going for density, three.
Two, two to three. So it adds one more.
Plus commercial expansion.
Which it's already there.
No, expansion.
But, and then to Jordan's staff report, you know, there's various points that he's referenced that are actually within our written P O C D, both in the two thousand and six Southford Plan and the two thousand and twenty-three Plan. And I, I, in my opinion, I just think at this point, the P O C D has more points to consider than the addition of one potential building lot.
It's not that we need one more house, it's that we need, we do need affordable housing. We do need diverse housing, not one more house is not going to make a difference.
I agree. I just, and to your point, I just don't think this is the application that, that, or this zoning change, potential zoning change, i- is the issue that's going to change anything in town.
Yeah. I just, I agree.
I'm concerned that, that's certainly, i- is a habitual response.
No.
You know, this is, is not a great parcel for this. That's certainly persuasive, and it is not consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development.
It, all of our work, that's our responsibility over, since two thousand and six, to the present.
So I would certainly move to, unless we're, you know, continue to discuss.
Move to, with the attachment?
To certainly pass on that, that, the staff, yes, the staff report. And that it is inconsistent with our plan, our two thousand and twenty-three Plan of Conservation and Development as well as the two thousand and six Southford Plan of Conservation.
And I would reference the Southford Village Plan.
That's right, that's what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we did our responsibility. Thank you. Okay, we have Affordable Housing Subcommittee Report.
So we were able to meet on the seventh.
Yay.
Yes, finally. And we're basically developing a list, going through the objectives of the Affordable Housing Plan and identifying the ways that we can bring a fuller report. So we've burdened Jordan with a number of questions and, and hope to set up some time to meet to get more information. He was very responsive to a number of questions that we had as well, and we're working on.
On, on what?
On what questions?
Yes.
I apologize, I, so we enumerated the action steps and objectives of the Affordable Housing Plan. So asking about guidance on housing overlay zones. We're checking on the trainings as part of, I think it was one point three of the Affordable Housing Plan. The available trainings to both the public and to staff. How people are alerted in the town and developers are alerted in the town of Affordable Housing information. Talking about how to develop a Realtor's Roundtable as well. Looking at linking on the webpage, the trifold for the ADUs and getting more information out and trying to find out if there've been an increase in applications for ADUs over the last couple of years, or over the last year or so. And you have plenty on your plate, so we, you have time to get them back.
I'll happily run that report.
Yeah.
I could probably tell you right off the bat. Hasn't been a significant uptick, but the data will show where we're at numbers-wise. Even if you're flat from nothing, that's effectively an improvement. It just, obviously, we all know septic is a huge challenge with that, so.
Would you consider a public forum for education instead of training, call it education?
It's certainly something we need to talk with Kevin Belemeyer too about to see if we could arrange. We had a discussion probably a year back with him and looking at, at providing a, you know, lunch and learn kind of thing.
Yeah, we've had others in.
There have been others in town, yep.
Where we've had a board and people come give their opinions, and you get it from the public and the other commissions. You know, the more education, I think, you're right, is so needed. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to add?
That's it.
Okay. Streetsa- street, you probably had it, Streetsa- gate. Subcommittee.
Streetsgate. Uh, we met December sixteenth and elected officers, and then we met again January thirteenth. On January thirteenth, Kelly Keenan was added to the commission. And we discussed what our purview might be for, for Streetscape and talked about like, you know, what, where we were going to focus. But I'll get to that in a second. One of the other things that came up that needed to come to the Planning Commission was that there's going to be lighting and sidewalks installed from Villarinas to the Poverty Bridge. And that's going to happen April twenty-sixth, but maybe twenty-seven. So the town has to come up with a design, and then the Streetscape Commission will be charged with coming up with the plan around that. But that's not going to be for a while. So those will, that's something that's kind of on our radar to, you know, to focus on and to work with the Planning Commission. But what I think is the most immediate thing is really nailing down where we're going to focus, what our criteria is for what we're going to look at for Streetscape. So there was a, a discussion, and we had the plans, and we were looking at different things. And then I referred to the two thousand and twenty pedestrian safety study because in here, there's a number of areas with improved, recommended improvements. So at the end of the meeting on January thirteenth, I suggested that maybe we look at the, the recommended improvements in here and see if there's any items that we could, you know, can bring under Streetscape and see if we could make some improvements. I mean, we talked about different things like what we can do and what we can't do as far as, you know, making changes to roadways or putting up signage, where there might be areas of higher concern around safety and being able to cross streets. So it was kind of an open discussion, thinking about where we might put our focus. But as I said, like, then the last thing was about talking about the Streetscape. So I think when we reconvene, we'll look at what the recommended improvements are here and see if there's anything that the Streetscape Committee can take on as a project or at least make some progress in these recommended improvements.
So you have a priorities?
The next meeting is not till February tenth, I think. I'm sorry, Nancy?
You'll have a priorities list then?
Uh, we have an extensive list, but I, I don't really feel like we've kind of narrowed down the priorities. I mean, I went into the meeting to this two-sided priorities list, and we didn't really make a lot of, you know, progress on here. It was really more of an open discussion.
But that's your goal?
Sorry?
That's your goal, to prioritize?
Yes, we are going to prioritize. I mean, so we'll have a campaign or a, a plan around this, the, the sidewalk and lighting project that's happening, but also what we could do as a Streetscape to make any improvements without a budget. That's a key thing, without a budget. So, you know, perhaps though, if we find some things that are kind of lower effort or low-hanging fruit, where we could say, all right, we could put some signage here, or maybe we can work with DOT with changing a, a, a timing on something. Maybe that would be things that we could do without a budget. But we also may be coming to planning or other, or E D C to see where we can get some collaboration and partnership.
Have you researched grant programs?
Um, not yet.
Cause that, that may affect.
There was, there was a con, I think we did mention something about grants, but we didn't go into detail about it.
It was the, the lighting indication for pedestrian walkways.
That was the, the grant?
Under a grant program.
Okay. For the lighting, okay. All right, I'm trying to think, cause I know I had a detailed discussion with Don and Till about the lighting that we originally had and how it meets dark sky compliance and all that. So because Kelly and I are new, newer to some of the planning that had already been done or previous versions of the commission, I think we're just kind of getting up to speed and forcing our way into the conversation. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Jordan.
I'm happy to hear it.
Yeah.
It's been two months.
Yeah, the first meeting, we just elected people, and the second one.
Maybe contact COG for their grant programs, you know?
Sorry?
Contact council governments for their input on grants.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It doesn't cost anything. Little time to go, yeah. Okay, we're up to meeting minutes. Have you reviewed them, and does anyone have any corrections, additions? You have a motion, please?
Motion to accept, as presented.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Around any other business? We're still missing a member of this commission. I don't know which party to balance the commission according to our charter is needed.
Who is two, that's been showing up?
It's the Republican.
No, we're missing a member.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, they, the two alternates.
Cause Jason.
This is the third meeting, they haven't attended either, so we need to speak with them, but um, the other two alternates, but we need a member. So if you would like, I can, I already put one call into the town clerk. to find out which party, and then we can ask whoever the chair of that party to recommend to us, so, too sweet, you know, we need it. So I can do that if you'd like, and Mr. Jordan, would you? Well, I'll, I'll do it. Okay. Okay, also, we still don't have a COG representative. And I guess there's going to be some, there are potentially some changes in council governments where the planning arm will be eliminated? Is that true?
That's what I heard, that they were opining on whether or not they were going to continue the roundtable discussion.
I think that's, well, roundtable for the planning arm or the executive arm?
The planning arm.
So they won't even be combined? There will be no input from planning?
We'll see if it continues, but that's, that's what I heard.
Do we have any input?
Right now, I'm not sure.
Hmm. Okay. Who knows?
Are we the only town that has a separate planning?
No, no, that's COG's is separate.
Planning and zoning under the municipal board are separate.
Yeah, within, within NVCOG, are, are we the only town that has a separate zoning and planning?
Not sure.
No. No, we don't.
I see a lot that are combined, but I'm not sure we're the only one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've had a lot of experience years on the commission I was chairing.
Yeah, you were the representative for a long time.
No, I'm talking about a, a former town where I was chairman of planning and zoning combined.
Uh-huh.
So I know how, the difference, how it works. My opinion is that, you know, if you get someone on a, on a, on a planning and zoning combined commission that is trying to educate themselves and enforce and have information for and make decisions on both regulations is.
Oh, that's not what I was asking. I was, for NVCOG, I was asking if, if they have.
They do.
Um, zone, they have zoning separate from planning?
No, it's on, there's only a planning representative.
Okay.
No zoning representative, yeah. It's a planning arm and executive arm are all the, first like.
They don't do any zoning stuff?
Are they?
From the regional perspective, not practicing.
Oh, okay. All right, I misunderstood. Thank you.
Okay, we requested in our minutes for a letter to go to what is Selectman, I wonder if that letter went. Is it here? Yeah, we requested a letter go out to all town commissions and boards requesting a volunteer to help with our representation, representation to COG. Maybe we should do that anyway before, if they don't know. Did we, did we do that?
We did, we reached out to a number of people to try and get a member, but for one reason or another, scheduling conflicts, um, we weren't able to actually get someone, but I'm happy to reach out to COG and see what the status is of their roundtable planning.
Okay, did we go to individuals or did we go to the various commissions?
I believe we just went to individuals.
Hmm, so maybe there are people out there that we don't
Happy to send a letter.
Know about that might be interested. I don't know, but try it, because we've been without for so long. And that's where the grants come in too, you become more aware of them. And you get information from other towns too on what they're doing, which is inspirational.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
For sure.
Anything else to come before the commission members that you would like to discuss? Nope?
No.
Okay. Wait, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Robin, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
Eight fourteen.